I'm the appointed district clerk for the Penfield Central School District Board of Education. Tonight is July 7th and it's our regular and organizational meeting. And I'm going to call it to order at 7:03 PM. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Individual.
The visible with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first order of business tonight is the administration of the oath of office to our newly elected board members. And our newest board member, Sean Hakiel, she previously took her oath in office with me on July 2nd because she was supposed to be away on vacation. But she is here to join us tonight, so we're happy to have her. But you don't have to retake your oath. Next, we'll go to our reelected board member, Lisa Benati-Chizzi. And if you would please raise your right hand to receive your oath and you can read it right off of your computer.
Okay, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education and the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the election of our officers and nominations will be received for both the president and the vice president. And according to Robert's Rules of Order, we don't need a second, but if someone wishes to second the motion, then we'll, to show his support, we'll accept that. And then after the nominations are closed, a vote will be taken. So first we'll start the meeting open for the nominations for the office of the board president for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. So is there anyone who would like to nominate?
I would like to have the honor and privilege of nominating Mark Elidge as our president of the Penfield Board of Education for 2020 to 2021. I think it would be a wonderful addition and I'm excited to do this.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to second that?
I would, it would be my honor and privilege to second that.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Barb Baviars and a second by Bill Yeager to appoint Mark Elidge to the president of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing no further nominations, I declare the nominations for Board of Education President closed and I will call for a vote. All those in favor of Mark Elidge for Board President, be free to hand. Are there any opposed? No. So all in favor and unopposed, Mark has been elected to president of the Board of Education for the 2020, 2021 school year. Congratulations, Mark. And so if you would please take your oath of office by raising your right hand and reading the oath.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of President of the Board of Education in the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, next are the nominations for the office of Board Vice President for the 2020, 2021 school year. Do I have any nominations for Vice President?
You do, because I also have the honor and privilege of putting Lisa Benati-Chizzi's name up for Vice President for the Penfield Central School District Board of Education for the school year of 2020, 2021. And I'm excited and honored to be doing this.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion made by Barb Baviars and seconded by Bill Yeager to appoint Lisa Benati-Chizzi to Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, I declare the nominations for Vice President closed and we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Lisa for Board Vice President, please raise your hands. All in favor and unopposed, congratulations, Lisa. You've been elected as Vice President of the Board for 2020, 2021. And if you would please take your oath of office for Vice President.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education and the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, so now I thank everyone and I will turn the meeting over to our new board president, Mr. Mark Elidge.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, and I'd like to thank the board for your support for me as president. I also think it's, we should be, we thank Catherine for her leadership as president over the past three years. She's done a great job, yes. And especially through the disruption of the past year with related to COVID. I mean, she's done a great job leading the board through this. And you know, it's something that was completely unplanned. And so again, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. It's been my honor to serve and I'm really happy to be part of this board. I think it's just a wonderful group of people and I look forward to continuing our good work.
So now we go to examination of the approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the July 7th, 2020 agenda as submitted. They have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Mark, do you want me to do the all in? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, like you've done in the past, if we have all in favor, just tell us.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we have the approval of the consent agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the following consent agenda. The approval of the minutes of June 20th, 2020. The acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee of Special Education. The acceptance of recommendations from the Committee of Preschool Special Education. The acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent of Personnel Changes. Request to approve Doug Daxtino, General Contractors Inc., or the RFP. And a request to approve the ACIA construction RFP service contract. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All are in favor and unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we go to special reports. And Tom, would you like to introduce a special report?
Sure, we have Jared Miller here with us tonight from Campus Construction. And they're gonna, he's gonna provide an update on the ongoing Capitol project. And I'll turn it over to Jared, as well as I think Jim may be able to share some photos that Jared had.
Good evening, how are you all and congratulations on all the nominations. Just wanted to obviously do a quick update of our projects we have ongoing. We will start right over with Cobles right aligned with the pictures. So over at Cobles, since the last meeting, we've made a lot of progress on the site portion of the project. As you can see in the photos, we've, we've done the first course of paving, so we've bindered the new parking lot. And the site contractor has worked his way through installing sidewalks. The past week, we've made much progress since this photo. So things are progressing really well, tidying up over there. And we'll move on to the next slide. So in a blink of an eye, you now have a classroom addition starting to really take form. The white panels you see are the insulated metal panels, just another layer of insulation as part of this project. There are crews working on HVAC, electrical, roofing, interior framing, sheathing, ductwork. In this picture, you'll see some of the piping that we've got ongoing. So a lot of moving parts in the Cobles addition. Everything's going really well schedule wise. Out back, you see the lower picture, it looks like a simple picture of a pile of dirt. But it is in fact the underground storm chamber system, which will collect and treat and hold all of the water much in a way of pond wood. But everything's underground, it's safer, it works better, and it gets it out of the way. So that is 100% in the ground. Our sanitary sewer reroute is 100% rerouted around the building. So as I said, we're in really good shape with the site. We can go to the next slide. So what you see is just another view of the restored storm chamber system, the lower section. I'm sure you recognize the playgrounds that used to be the access drive to go back to where the addition is now. What we're doing is bringing storm sewer from the new parking lot areas, an existing loading dock area, back to that storm chamber system to tie that all in. And again, that system's in place to reduce the amount of runoff coming off the school site. We can hit the next slide. One, one site we were not active on in the last meeting, but we've made an immense amount of progress on since, is the Indian Landing Site. Again, we've got another storm chamber system going in here. You can see where the equipment is pushing, pushing earth around. That's the general area of where the storm chamber system has already been installed on the ground and they're tying in manholes. So again, huge progress on the site and with the next slide. We've made a lot of progress with demo. Originally scheduled to not get into that area until obviously after school was over. We got a few weeks of a head start there based on our other construction. So we're making great progress. If you go there today, that structure on the top picture is no longer there. The building is gone, so making a lot of real progress out there. And again, out front with our two-story classroom addition out there. They're making really good headway with the demolition there as well. So in each of these buildings, there's, there's some more, we call it boring, infrastructure work that's going on, just as important as everything else, but not necessarily photo worthy. But there's a number of activity going on within each of these buildings that kind of is out of sight, out of mind, but still, again, crucial to completion of the project. The next one is Scribner. We have actually two of those underground storm chamber systems. The first is shown actually directly below that red truck. That system is to treat all of the runoff from the classroom addition out front. The second is below that asphalt, which is shown in the picture below. That system has been installed, covered, and is now paved, so we have a parking lot back in place. That will get topped next season, so next summer before we're clear and out of here. We don't want to damage the new pavement with any construction activity, so that'll be temporarily striped for the upcoming school year. So it was, it was a crucial piece to get done before the end of the summer and they jumped right on it once we found out school wasn't coming back. And again, it, another thing cleared out of the way for as far as site construction. So we can go to the next slide. It doesn't look like a gymnasium just yet, but it is a gymnasium. We've got the exterior brick up, the interior block is up. We've poured the gym slab. So the only thing we're waiting on is steel, the roofing, and all the components of that. So great progress there. The building, building looks great from the outside. And like I said, the contractors are moving right through it nicely. The next slide, you will see some of the interior work within that space. This is the, going to be the updated fitness center within Scribner. Next one, so as far as that fitness center, we don't have to go back, but what they're working on right now is adding a floor leveler to that area. It's obviously all framed, all the mechanical roughens are complete. And we can expect to see the floor being poured and poured on in the next week and a half, so that'll start really taking shape as well. This next photo encompasses two of our work areas. It's the cafeteria addition as well as the gymnasium. So you can see the, the foundation wall is in place. We're working on some mechanical in-floor piping. And then we'll be pouring that ahead of steel. We're anticipating steel for all three areas in the next three to four weeks. So there's gonna be a few crews working on steel and hopefully everything comes together really quickly. It's one of the areas we're really hoping to take advantage of not being in school to try to get it done earlier than anticipated. So we're trying to move as best we can to get all that completed earlier than anticipated. The next few shots are what used to be the Scribner kitchen. Right now, the floor, all the demo was complete and the floor is prepped for some floor leveling. Once that's in, then we'll start working on finishes. All the mechanical roughens are in place. All of our abatement in that area as of today is now complete. So that was a big hurdle to clear, not just schedule wise, but the abatement pieces and parts of this project are, or any project really, are the ones that really kind of hit the checkbook. So we did really well as far as getting out of there with relatively minimal impacts as far as the abatement goes. So the next piece, you may not be able to see it, but that's the point. It's restoration to the existing ethos work. So any of that tan that you see is all brand new again. So it was taken down. The existing construction was a foam material with an ethos, almost like a stucco material over top of it. It got replaced with a concrete board. Ultimately, what was happening is birds can get in through that foam, they can chip away at the foam. This new construction helps aid in not having that situation. Everything looked really, really good. We've gone through punch list on, on a lot of it. And so a lot of areas are 100% complete as far as that goes. Out back at the high school, so we're doing, again, we're doing some more of the ethos restoration over at the high school. Down below, you have an in-progress shot of your new pool filters. Those were started up yesterday, so those are 100% operational as of yesterday. So again, a nice opportunity to get in and get out and get a decent scope of work complete while no one's in the building. So another piece, again, this is part of the other roofing project money. But the track, this is a progress shot, the track is all red now. The resurfacing of the track. As of tomorrow morning at 7:00, the track striper will be out doing their layout and completing the track striping. So hopefully in the next two weeks, you have a brand new track. And I know how, how excited everyone gets for roofing pictures, but they are one of the most important parts of the building as they keep us watertight and keep the maintenance down. But we have roofers active on Indian Landing, Cobles, and the high school making great progress. We again awarded the project, I think right after the last meeting. And we have sections of roof that are already 100% torn off and complete. So the roofers are really getting after it with large crews. And we should be well out of the summer window with getting this complete. So making really good progress. As far as photos, I think that should be it. I guess with that, we are in great shape, schedule and budget wise. And if anyone has any questions regarding any of what you've seen or anything that you've seen just by driving by, feel free to do so.
Board, does anyone have any questions for Jared? Catherine?
Hi Jared, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, so two real quick questions. The storm chamber system that you were talking about, am I assuming correctly or is there another way of putting it? Do those, does that go into tanks? Is that it, underground?
So you, you may have seen the, the dome-shaped structures, they're yellow. They're basically an underground cavity that is structurally sound enough to carry even school buses over top of them.
I see, okay.
Essentially an underground pond, but it's meant to also regenerate any of the groundwater potentially below there. What it does is it treats it through the system. It collects the water and anything that is, that exceeds the capacity of the system, then feeds into the storm sewer on the street side.
Oh, okay.
The idea behind it is to, whenever you put a building in place where it was grass and it was collecting the water in the grass, it's no longer collecting it. So the point of it is to then slow the rate that it hits the town infrastructure.
Oh, okay.
So it's to kind of hold it for a little while and then seep it into the system slowly so that you're not, you're not overburdening the town storm, storm sewer.
Got it.
That's, that's the goal.
And then the other quick question I had was the concrete ethos that you were talking about. You mentioned that it's stronger than the foam and it helps to keep bird nests out. Does it have a longer lifespan than foam?
We've seen better results just because of the flexibility's not there, especially in the area, the areas behind that building. You have a very active lacrosse community. It really helps with deflecting the lacrosse balls a little bit better than the foam does.
Okay, oh, do you think that that's why the birds have access?
No, the birds are really stubborn in the, in this, in the way that they, they can just pick a hole in that stuff pretty much overnight.
So this is just a better choice?
Yeah, yeah, this, this, this is the best choice moving forward is to go with the concrete board. That's the way we're seeing it on, on almost all school jobs.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Barb?
Jared, I'm very interested in your roof updates. Just curious, are you making them stronger for potential future roof gardens? Just asking.
I don't know that that was part of the discussion, but
It should have been.
The systems being put in place are cutting edge and the best materials possible.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's all.
Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I was over at Cobles, my kids are at Cobles, and as much as I love that big tree that was there, what you've done there and the way it's gonna work and the way I see it working is gonna be so much better for that school and safer, so much safer. It just really did an excellent job.
Thank you, and that's, that's a big component of this, any of the site construction that we do on these jobs is the, the first thing to keep in mind is the safety. Sometimes, sometimes the safety is kind of frustrating for the everyday driver that's dropping their kids off, but the whole purpose of it is safety for first and foremost. And I think what the architects and engineers designed on that, it's really gonna help the flow and, and keep that area safe, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? So Jared, I have a question, you know, because the schools were closed, you're able to really get ahead of schedule. Can you tell me how the, like the restrictions for the COVID is impacting, has impacted us in the past and what you might see in the future as far as impact on schedule and, and development with the COVID?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things we tried to do is any area where we could advance the schedule and get after things such as early demo of areas that are occupied. Alan and his folks were really helpful in getting areas cleared out for us. So we tried to get ahead of all areas possible because we anticipated material delays, manpower shortages, things of that nature. We did see a brief period of manpower shortages. The most impactful piece of it is really the material delays. Typically on our projects, we, if we get a head start, it's nice to get ahead in areas because other projects are not getting that head start. And as far as school construction goes, we were basically in July conditions as of April. Everybody was requesting concrete if they could get it. So it, there's, there's been some slowdowns on materials, nothing hugely impactful. We see a little bit of a slowdown on steel. But again, it, we built up enough of a buffer with the extra time we had to get ahead in other areas to absorb some of this. So that was really the goal, is we anticipated that there's going to be slowdowns in certain areas. And just to try to adjust and conform as best we can to not see the impact on the backside of the schedule. So again, schedule wise, we're in really good shape. We're not seeing major, major changes as far as making adjustments with any of our schedules. It's, it's moving pieces ahead of others that we see that could possibly be delayed. But again, the milestone dates of the actual completion and delivery, we're not adjusting until we know we can either deliver them early or confirm that they'll be on time. So it, it's, it's been, it's been a different, different construction season thus far. But we've, that extra pad has really helped us to ensure that we're not going to fall down when we get close to the deadline dates.
Thank you, Jared. You know, this whole Capitol project has had a long, long windy path to get to where we are. And it's good to see that we're actually ahead of schedule despite all the things that have gone on. So again, thank you for your help in the presentation and be sure to extend our thanks to Gary Huffman as well. Look forward to seeing him in the future updates.
Absolutely, yeah, Gary, Gary was tied up today and was disappointed he wasn't gonna be able to make it and, and make everyone laugh if he couldn't get his technology to work.
Thank you, Jared.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Normally at this time, we would have visitor speaking time. The Board of Education meetings from March 16th, 2020 forward until further notice shall be closed to the public under the Governor Executive Order 202.1. Therefore, the board encourages residents to share their opinions and voice their concerns and offer suggestions through written communication. And we look forward to having, going back to the period where we can actually have a real visitor speaking time sometime in the future. So I will turn it over to Tom for student honors, staff honors, and superintendent's report.
Thank you, I actually have just one report, and that is to welcome our new Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Dr. Dan Driffl. And Dan joins us from the Wayne Central School District where he was their Assistant Superintendent for Business. And prior to that, Marion Central Schools, and prior to that, the private sector. After a very long interview process, we're very glad that Dan joined us here in Penfield. This is his first official board meeting as the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, so I just want to welcome Dan. Make sure everybody gets to see him here on Zoom. And then in a moment, I'm gonna be turning it over to Dan for an overview of the organizational items for our reorg meeting. So welcome, Dan, to Penfield.
Thank you, Dr. Pfund, I appreciate that. Haven't even been here a week yet, but you can definitely tell that this organization is a public good people, they're really reliable. It's a personal privilege and honor to be a part of this organization. I really look forward to contributing value to this learning community, so thank you again.
And Mark, that actually concludes my student and staff honors. And unless there's any further interview questions for Dan, I'll turn it over to Dan for the overview of organizational items.
Jim, could you share your screen for the PowerPoint, please?
Is Jim?
I have that PowerPoint up, so I'm gonna need a minute to do that.
Thank you.
Wasn't prepared that I was gonna have to do that part of it, so give me just a second.
So while Jim's doing that, I also just want to welcome Dan on behalf of the board. You know, it's, it's a bit of anxiety sometimes when you have someone like Mark Leav, who's been around for a long time, you don't know what he's gonna get. But you know, the board, the district has done a long and vigorous, rigorous selection process. And I think it says a lot that, you know, you've been selected and knowing what Tom has done to select you to replace Mark, I think we feel very comfortable that we were, will be in good hands going forward.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Mark. Thank you.
There we go.
Well, that was a nice picture of Dan.
Go.
And there we go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Huffman. So reorganization meeting for most of you, this is kind of a review. But for Sean and myself, this is actually our first exposure to Penfield's, what essentially is a table setting for the entire fiscal year, what things look like, who we appoint externally to be our partners, who we appoint internally to be our board officers. So the organization meeting is required for central school districts to take place in the first 15 days of the academic year, fiscal year. So we're good there. We have 52 items for your review and approval this evening. And we'll go through a couple of those now. I won't go through all of them in particular, but I'll point out some ones that might be most topical to all of you. So the first one is just the readoption of certain board policies. Number two is really the big one. It's kind of the laundry list of all of the external appointments of our professional service providers, people like our auditors, our architects, construction management folks internally. It looks at some of our DASAC coordinators, our district clerk, purchasing agents, treasurers, Medicaid compliance, so on and so forth. The claims auditor is appointed and serves for the Board of Education as another check on internal controls regarding purchasing. You may or may not be aware of Penfield's participation in consortiums. We participate in two consortiums for healthcare and for workers' compensation with regional school districts as a way to mitigate our exposure to certain costs in those areas. And they've been largely very effective operations for us over the years. Moving down a little bit to 10 or 11, petty cash and change funds. So these are not only the dollar amounts around the district, but who the custodians are of those in particular funds and who are in charge of managing those throughout the year. Authorization to give Dr. Putnam approval to approve budget transfers up until $15,000 throughout the year. To number 15, the designation of the district's primary bank. On the next page, number 16, we also appoint other banking institutions for the purposes of essentially raid shopping for some general municipal law compliant investments. Our two papers of record are Rochester Business Journal as a second and the, what was it called? The Daily Record is our primary paper. In the event that those options would not be available for publication, we use the Democrat Chronicle. Moving down a little bit to number 20, establishing fees for facilities use. So this is for when outside organizations want to use not just our facilities for custodial purposes, but potentially transportation or food service operations. Capital project change orders are given approval to the superintendent of schools just because we only meet once or twice a month as a board. All of those change orders do eventually come back to the Board of Education for review and approval, but just as a matter of expediting ongoing affairs. We do participate in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. So that's a federal program. That means that we need to remain compliant with things like a price lunch equity, which drives where our kids pay for, for meals. And then also compliance and adherence to all the nutritional standards that go along with that program. I mentioned earlier legally investing school money. Rates right now, it's kind of, you know, completely fallen through the floor with the pandemic situation. But we do try to invest school funds in a manner that's appropriate and advantageous for us, all while being compliant with general municipal law regarding the rules on collateralization, safety, liquidity, security, and so on. So it's primarily things like treasury bills and certificates of deposit. That is for those. Moving to the next page, we participate in Section 5 Athletics as a school district. We participate in cooperative bids, moving down to number 34. So what essentially that happens is we pool our book of business together with local school districts, primarily for BOSIs, but sometimes through outside piggybacking agencies. So we can get very competitive procurement prices on things like utilities, supplies, materials, a laundry list of items. Approval for the superintendent to approve contracts up to $15,000 annually. It authorizes the mileage reimbursement rate based on the IRS rate. Current 2020 IRS rate is 57 and a half cents. And then there are a bunch of items regarding CSC, partial hearing officers, independent evaluators. And then moving to the last page. We have some contractual obligations for fingerprinting fees. The workday resolution is a requirement of the ERS retirement system. For purposes of calculation, no service accrual time. So for every title, we stipulate exactly how many hours are a workday. If outside agencies want to use our school buses, they have to pay a fee that's established in line number 46. And then we have qualified lead evaluators. Those are all of our building principals and some of our directors as well. I think we have about eight or nine of those folks. And those are really the big ones. And then number 51 is just kind of the catchall to reappoint the board policy handbook before the policy committee throughout the year does their work and updates as we go. So any questions regarding kind of that cursory understanding of the annual organizational items?
Board, anyone have any questions? I can't quite see everybody here. So if you do, let me try this. I can't see everybody in my view here. So if you have a question, just speak up. Okay, there we go. Well, thank you. All right. Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. And so now actually that brings us to item six, which is, which is the vote on the organizational items that Dan just briefed us on. And this is also, you have more detailed information in your agenda. So the recommendation is that the organizational items 6A1 through 6A52, which Dan reviewed, be approved for the 2020, 2021 school year. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and unopposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Sharon. Now we're in Section 7A, which is facility change orders. In the packet, you have the detail of the change order items. I believe there's about five of them, I believe. So it's recommended that the board approve the change orders as described in the agenda packet. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
All are in favor and unopposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight, the revenue anticipation note resolution for 2020 and 2021. I'll just summarize what this is. This is something we started just a couple of months ago. We, we created, we approved the resolution for this to last to the end of the school year, which is, was June 30th. And now we're going to create a new resolution for the 2020, 2021 season or school year. What this allows us to do is essentially make, take short-term loans to cover expenses, knowing that we will be getting revenue after that. So basically if the revenue comes later, then, then we need to spend it, then we can take a short-term loan, knowing that we can pay back that loan when the revenue arrives. And we've done this mainly due to the economic uncertainties brought on by the, by the COVID crisis and how it's affected state revenue. And, you know, we just want to make sure we are in a position to, to be able to have adequate access to cash should the state, you know, make changes that impact our cash flow. So at this time, it would be, it would be appropriate to have a motion and a second to adopt revenue anticipation notes for 2020, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and unopposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. We're at item nine, the professional learning plan. It is recommended that the board approve the professional learning plan that was presented on June 23rd of this year. A motion and a second to approve that professional learning plan as presented June 23rd of this year.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and none are opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. The, we're at item 10, which is the code of conduct for New York State Board members. The New York State School Board Association has a code of conduct for school board members. The school boards may approve it yearly as an affirmation and show of support for the state code of conduct. So it's recommended that we approve this, may I have a motion and a second to approve the code of conduct, which is in your packet.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and unopposed. The motion carries.
We're at item 11, which is President's remarks. We have two items. The first one is the New York State School Board Association Annual Convention, which is October 29th through the 31st in New York City. The registration opens July 27th of this year. If you see in the, in our agenda, it has some information about the costs as well as the reimbursement policy for the, for the convention itself. And then the separate from that is the, you know, the hotels and transportation costs and reimbursement would be, I'm sorry, not reimbursement, I'm sorry, cancellation fees. Should this get canceled? Now, the, we haven't heard anything that says that, that this will not go on, although the New York State School Board Association did send out a survey about three weeks ago to the members to see what their interests were. And I think we can discuss this in the future. You don't, we don't have to make a decision today. And of course, everyone makes their own decision on whether they're able to attend or not. But we will hopefully get some more definitive message from the school, New York State School Board Association before we get to this point where we actually have to do registration. Any, any questions or comments on that? And then item B is the school board workshop and school tours. We're planning on having a couple workshops to discuss the major topics that we'll be working on this year. You know, it has been a very, you know, up to this point, we've had a lot of things going on and that affect education. We will discuss those and use those to make plans for the upcoming year. Our tours were canceled due to the shutdowns related to COVID crisis. And we do want to do that, especially in light of all the construction that's, that we've just seen. So we can actually go in and see the construction as it's developing. And at the same time, there's always things that, that the district would like us to see regarding the facilities and how it relates to our building condition surveys and potential future capital projects. Sharon has sent out an email for people to list their availability. So if you haven't, please take a look at that and send that to her. Let her know what your availability is so we can schedule those workshops and tours. Any questions on that? Catherine?
Yeah, I had to unmute. Do you have a sense yet as to how we're going to conduct the workshops? If that would be virtual or in person or functional?
I don't know if we've really decided it. And I think there's yet, I mean, personally, since it's a small group, I would like to be in person because we have, again, this is the beginning of the year. You know, it's been a while since we've all been together. Hopefully there will be a place in the district where we can, where we can all meet and meet this distance guidelines. But that's something that we'll just have to decide as we go forward.
I have one more. Oh, excuse me, Mark.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Go ahead, Catherine.
The other question was the tours, is that fulfilling the 19, 2020 school year obligation? Or are we bridging it for 20 and 21?
Another good question.
Well. Mark, I'm sorry. I, I think we'd be looking at bridging. You know, the, the letter of the law is that the school board reviews the buildings before each school year. But, but nobody does that because you typically want to get in when you can actually see staff and see the buildings and, and you trust in Alan McNiff, our Director of Facilities, to make sure things are, are, you know, safe and secure. So I did reach out to the Monroe County superintendents. Many other boards are in the same situation. And we're looking at it really as, as a bridge as opposed to doing a tour in August and then trying to get another one done, you know, in the next couple of months after that. So my recommendation would be that you use this as a bridge into, in between last school year and this current school year that we're in.
Thank you, Tom. And I think considering that our, the, the end of this past school year, we were basically operating under executive order from the governor and not, you know, the laws as they're written. I think that's, you know, I think we can do a bridge and still, and still be compliant to the law. Any other questions or discussions on that? Let's see. A new business, I'm going to jump down to number 13, new business. You see a list of the committees. So please send, if you're interested in participating in a committee, and send me your, send that to me and copy Sharon so we can see what, and we can make decisions on who will be on what committee. If you have questions about the committees, some of them meet at certain times of the day, which might affect your availability. And please feel free to ask Tom or, or myself about that. And in addition to that, we do have, we will start the signups for the PTAs groups and the boosters, as well as all the other events that we generally try to support and attend. We'll begin that shortly. Questions on that? Any other new business that anyone would like to bring up? All right. Well, with that, I think we've successfully completed our first meeting of the year. May please have a motion and a second to adjourn at 7:51 PM.
So moved. Oh, no, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor and none opposed.
All right. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Nice.